Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. If there is a seat, please take it, and if not, I'm sorry, but we are going to have a very brief meeting. We want to thank you all for joining us. It is definitely a full house. This is a special meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. It has been posted as required by state law. We're going to start right now. I know I just told you to have a seat, but now I'm going to ask you to rise as Commissioner Perez leads us in our invocation.
Heavenly Father, thank you for gathering us here today. As we begin this meeting, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. We lift up our mayor and commissioner who have been re-elected and are renewing their commitment to serve our community. We thank you as well for the commissioner who is completing their service and for the work they have done for Harlingen. And we ask a special blessing for the new commissioner being sworn in today as they begin their journey in public service. Grant each of them clarity, humility, and a true heart for our residents. May every decision made by this body honor the people of Harlingen and reflect unity and purpose. Amen.
Now the pledge.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Mark?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 All right, moving on. For Citizens Communication Mayor, we don't have anybody signed up today. Okay, so then let's move on to the next item. Okay, next item will be consideration of possible action to approve a resolution declaring the results of the City of Harlingen November 4th, 2025 general elections for city mayor at large, city commissioner District 1 and District 2. And right now, we have Cameron County Elections Department. We have Ms. Yowali McLean, if you want to come this way.
I don't think we can do that.
Testing. Better. Yes, so I am here from the Cameron County Elections Department to present the results of the November 4th election and hopefully for the adoption of the canvas. So Harlingen has a total of 38,972 registered voters. There was a total ballots cast of 4,699 for a 12.06% turnout rate for the election. For mayor, for Ms. Norma Sepulveda, she had a total of 3,531 votes, 100% of the votes. She had no opposition. And there was 1,168 undervotes for a total votes cast of 4,699. For Commissioner District 1, Harlingen, Ms. Delia Cavazos-Gomez, she received 582 votes for a percentage of 55.75%, thus gaining the majority of the votes. For Mr. Richard Uribe, it was 462 votes for a percentage rate of 44.25%. There was zero overvotes, 90 undervotes, for a total of 1,134 ballots cast in that race. For Commissioner District 2, Harlingen, we had Mr. Frank Puente with 164 votes for a percentage of 25.62%. Mr. Daniel Nemesio Lopez had 476 votes for a percentage of 74.38%, thus gaining the majority of the votes. There was zero overvotes, 37 undervotes, for a total of 677 ballots cast in that race. You know, it is the recommendation of our department that the canvas be adopted as it was presented today.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I have something. For the people at home, they're listening at home, can you explain what overvotes and undervotes are?
An overvote is when in a race, the voter marks both of the ovals, so that it's an overvote. So there's no vote there. An undervote is for when a race is left blank. There's nothing is selected on that race.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me.
Now, before we move on, I have a few words that I'd like to say for our mayor pro temp or Commissioner Kinsley, because tonight, we are here also to honor him. And he is someone that began this chapter of public service alongside me and alongside many of us here on the commission. And from day one, Commissioner has led with integrity. Every decision that he's made over the last three and a half years has come from a place of service to the people of the city of Harlingen. He's thoughtful, he's principled, and over time, through his actions and the way that he showed up, he became one of the voices that I valued most on this commission. And then, of course, there are all the small gestures that I think I will always remember, and so will the commission. His greeting of everybody at every meeting and every event, his calm reminders of why we all do this work, and of course, during proclamations over the last three and a half years, whenever we move from this dais and we move to the front here, he always pauses and lets me walk ahead. That's a simple act of courtesy and just reveals the kind of gentleman that he is. And it is a little moment, but it's always meant a lot to me. And of course, I think we'll all miss all the little one-liners that we get from Commissioner Kinsley as well. And those of you that know him know those zingers will last a lifetime. And it's really impossible not to notice the love and devotion that he has for his wife Tessie. That alone tells you who he is at his core, and it's one of the qualities that I admire most about him. And although we all will miss him very much, I know that this next chapter is exactly where he should be, with his wife, his children, and his grandbabies. So Commissioner, thank you for your service, your kindness, your heart. You left a mark on this commission, and we will all miss you more than you know. And we're going to make you come back in one way or another. And so I wanted to also, you know, Commissioner Kinsley has done such an amazing job here in the city, and we all just love you so much. And I know that our delegation at the state level felt the same way. So I reached out to them, and I'd like to give them an opportunity to come and speak. So first, we'll start with Senator Inahosa.
Well, thank you so much for giving me a few moments here to be here. It is my honor to be here today with you all, an honor to recognize the service of Commissioner Kinsley, not only for your great efforts here for the City of Harlingen, but also as my friend. I met Commissioner Kinsley before he was ever a candidate. I was a then candidate over at the Marine Military Academy. It was very fitting that I had a meeting earlier today with Colonel Greider and Dowling over there. And they've been amazing to this community and the services that they provide. But I had that wonderful tour that Commissioner Kinsley had given me that day. And since then, it beget a friendship, but also just a remarkable tenure as a commissioner. And I'm just honored to be here to be able to give you a little bit of that recognition that you so richly deserve. So we had a resolution from the state of Texas that I'd like to read to you. Whereas Ford H. Kinsley Jr. is concluding his service on the Harlingen City Commission in 2025, providing a fitting opportunity to recognize his outstanding record of achievement. And whereas Mr. Kinsley was elected to represent District 1 on the city commission in June 2022, and during his notable tenure, he has also served as mayor pro tempore. He has further contributed to his community as president of Keep Harlingen Beautiful, the Harlingen Amigas Lions Club, and the Casa of Cameron and Willacy Counties Board of Directors, and as a member of the Board of South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. And whereas a proud U.S. Marine Corps veteran, Mr. Kinsley began his military career in 1971 and trained as a cartographer and surveyor at Fort Belvoir, Virginia. He went on to serve with USMC Infantry, Aviation, and Engineer Units. And after rising to the rank of First Sergeant, he completed tours of duty as a chief drill instructor in South Carolina and Japan. He subsequently carried out assignments as Sergeant Major in support of Operations Desert Shield and Desert Storm. And following his final tour in Paris Island, South Carolina, he retired in June 2000. And whereas since leaving active duty, Mr. Kinsley has served as academy sergeant major, commandant of cadets, and director of alumni affairs at the Marine Military Academy in Harlingen. Dedicated to giving back to his fellow veterans, he has held leadership roles with the Harlingen Veterans Advisory Board and the nonprofit organization American Military Support. In all his endeavors, he enjoys the love and support of his wife of 51 years, Teresita, and their four children and 10 grandchildren. And whereas Ford Kinsley has demonstrated a longstanding commitment to making Harlingen a better place for all, and he has earned the lasting admiration and appreciation of his fellow residents, now therefore be it resolved that Ford H. Kinsley Jr. be commended for his exemplary service on the Harlingen City Commission, and that he be extended sincere best wishes for the future. And I've got this custom engraved gavel to present to you on behalf of the Senate District 27.
Thank you, Senator Inahosa. And now we have Representative Janie Lopez.
I'm a shorty, so I have to move this down. What a blessing to stand before you today. Servanthood, leadership, what God has called us to do, serve our people. And that's exactly what Ford Kinsley has done. And today, with the state of Texas, I am here to honor him with a flag that was flown over the Capitol in Austin for mayor pro temp Ford H. Kinsley today, in your honor of the servanthood and the huge heart that you have. When people ask about the fruit of the spirits, that's you. The kindness, the love that you give to people, the service that you provide, that's a dear servant. Whether it was to make decisions on the roads, the holes on the roads, whether it was to make decisions on drainage, water infrastructure, that was him with that amazing wisdom that God has given him. And today, we honor you for all the hard work and your lovely wife also, for all the support, because we know that being a servant is not just you alone, it's that support that you get from your family. And of course, the teamwork that comes from all the commissioners and the city employees that make this happen. Congratulations to all of you for all the successes.
So can we please give a round of applause to Senator Inahosa and Representative Lopez, and of course, Mayor Pro Temp Ford Kinsley. We also have a plaque that we're going to have Delma read on behalf of the city commission.
Hello, good evening. This is presented to Mayor Pro Temp Ford Kinsley. For years of service, visionary leadership, and unwavering dedication, your impact will be remembered, your example will endure. Today, on the 17th day of November, we gather to honor Mayor Pro Temp Ford Kinsley, whose dedication, vision, and leadership throughout his term with the City of Harlingen has left an incredible mark on our community. Throughout his tenure, Mayor Pro Temp Kinsley has exemplified integrity, compassion, and a steadfast commitment to public service. His efforts have not only advanced important initiatives, but also inspired colleagues and citizens alike. As we say farewell, we extend our deepest gratitude to the years of service and wish him continued success in all future endeavors. Mayor Pro Temp Ford Kinsley, your legacy will continue to guide us, and you will always be remembered with respect and appreciation. With deepest gratitude, City of Harlingen, Mayor Sepulveda, and City Commission.
We're going to move on to item seven, the swearing in and oath of office to newly-elected and re-elected officials. We're going to start with Mayor Norma Sepulveda, and she's going to be sworn in by Judge Sheila Garcia Benes. And do you have somebody to hold the flag?
I, Norma Sepulveda, solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of mayor of the City of Harlingen, of the State of Texas, and will to the gods in my presence, sitting truly, truthfully, protect and defend and defend the Constitution and laws, the constitutional laws of the United States and this state and this state.
Mayor, we also have something for you from Senator Inahosa.
Oh, hey, you're sneaky.
Mayor, it is my honor and pleasure to be here and to present to you a certificate of excellence to the Honorable Norma Sepulveda in recognition of your reelection and swearing-in as the mayor of the city of Harlingen, November 17, 2025. Thank you for your service and all your great work. God bless you.
Well, thank you. I just want to say a few words. I'll be very, very brief. I just want to thank all of you for being here today. I appreciate all of the support and the love. And I want to thank my family, of course, my husband, my two boys, my dad, my sister, all of my family that supports me. And of course, my mom crew that are here today. I could not do any of this without you. Judge Bens is not just a public servant herself, but a deep, a very, very close friend of mine that helps me daily. And all of the ladies that help me to be able to do the thing that I can, that I do for the city is because of this village that I have. So thank you so much. Thank you all for being here. And now we're going to move on, because I know we've got a lot on the agenda. But I did want to say thank you. And of course, of course, I couldn't do this without the help of, especially my little one right there. But you got to return the Bible. You can't keep it. So you want to bring it back? And of course, we thank God above all else. Thank you.
Next, we're going to have newly-elected Delia Cavazos-Gomez to come up here with Judge David Sanchez.
Thank you.
Ziran?
Yes. I, Delia Cavazos-Gomez, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of City Commissioner, District One, City of Harlingen, of the state of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the state. So help me God.
On behalf of the state of Texas, we also, oh, excuse me.
No, no, no.
On behalf of the state of Texas, we also would like to present a certificate of excellence to the Honorable Delia Cavazos-Gomez in recognition of your election and swearing-in as the District One Commissioner, City of Harlingen, November 17, 2025.
So one more round of applause for our newly-elected commissioner. Welcome to the team. Moving on.
Okay, we're going to move on to our re-elected Commissioner, Daniel Nemecio Lopez, for District Two.
Ford, I got you some new recruits. Mamas. You stand right here with me. It's Mr. Science.
Ay, chiquito.
Hey, over here. Sorry. That's great. So you can't ask the Lord to go anywhere without coffee. Daniel, back to November 4, 2014, I swore you in this morning just like this as a young assistant district attorney. And together, shoulder-to-shoulder, we went on to take some of the really bad guys, burglars, calibeters. You distinguish yourself as an amazing and awesome prosecutor. And I saw in you, among other qualities, two qualities in particular that I want to share with the public here. Number one, with the quality that you learn, you do not learn in the university. You don't learn in books. It's instilled at home by your parents, just Lopez and Nemecio. And that is the way that you went on to tweet. Everybody, all walks a line with the utmost respect. Even defense attorneys would get in your face and be, you know, doing their job. They would always answer, yes, sir, no, ma'am, yes, sir, no, ma'am. Very awesome. And that was always admiring to me. And the second quality is another quality that, you know, is just in your heart, and that is your integrity. Integrity to make the best decision with these folks here, not what's best for you, but what's best for the citizens of Harlingen. So I really admire that. I know you're going to do a great job. And I have a sense, and I'm pretty good at this, that this is not the last time that I'm going to swear you in. So in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I,
Daniel Lopez,
do solemnly swear, affirm, that I will faithfully execute the duties
I will faithfully execute the duties
of the office of City Commissioner, District Two, City of Harlingen.
My position.
Of the state of Texas,
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability,
And will, to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect,
Preserve and protect.
and defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
and laws of the United States,
And laws of the United States.
and of the state.
And of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God. And once again, on behalf of the state of Texas, we'd like to present this certificate of excellence to the Honorable Daniel Nemecio Lopez in recognition of your reelection and swearing-in as District Two Commissioner, City of Harlingen, November 17, 2025. God bless you.
Daniel didn't start off with three kids. Something in public service.
Well, I want to thank each and every one of you guys for coming, not only to support me, but to support our newest commissioner and to support our mayor. This is a tough job. You guys have seen it. You guys, the family members, to the commissioners, have lived it, all right? But we do this because we love Harlingen. We want to continue doing what we can to make Harlingen the best city we possibly can. I couldn't have done it, first and foremost, without staff. Staff. I got so many compliments on the road that we're not clockwalking, but specifically because of the job y'all are doing. Whether it's our grants department, whether it's at the library, every single division of our city, people are very happy that we're heading in the right direction. And that's because of you all. I couldn't have done this without the friends that I've become family, the C. Sentes, the Plutuses, the Commissaries. Everyone that's in here helps. And they either trust me at the beginning, and I earned that trust, and continued that trust when I became a commissioner, or you guys, because you relate to me, will voice this vote. To my parents, thank you so much. I know that there's touching guts sometimes with me growing up, just like my boys. But thank you for never giving up on me. And to my wife, my beautiful wife, and my boys. I know some days it's like you're a single mom because I'm not, I'm not at home. And you have to take the full burden of raising three boys by yourself. And thank you. I couldn't do this without Chaminade. And being I'm done is a success because of you. Every time I pray out to the game, I listen to you. So thank you so much. See you again, all right?
And I see your swag are saying, "And me too." Well, this is, thank you all so much, really, from the bottom of our hearts. It is, it is so, it's amazing to see the community come out here in support and supporting the city commission. Know that we're going to work together. We're going to do what's right for the city of Harlingen. We're going to make you, we're going to continue to make you proud, and we're going to move Harlingen forward together. But we are not done. We're almost done. We have one other item.
We have consideration of possible action pursuant to the Harlingen City Charter Article for Section Six to elect a Mayor Pro Tem by a majority vote of the city commissioners.
All right. And we'll entertain a motion. We, Mayor Pro Tem Kinsley, has stepped down. And so it is time for us to elect a newer, a new Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to nominate Daniel for Mayor Pro Tem.
I haven't gotten the second yet, so let's hold off, right?
Don't worry, I know he paid someone.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So thank you again. We are, this is a short meeting. We are going to adjourn, but please feel free to stick around. We're going to be taking some pictures. There's also some refreshments downstairs, some cake. And this is going to be the shortest meeting you ever come to, so don't get used to it. For those of you that are going to be coming back. We are officially adjourned. Thank you.